In this meeting, I know it's a short notice meeting, but I think it's very important that we all chime in on it. There's some major concerns that we're having here in the city. So I'll start the meeting now. Notice hereby given, the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold an emergency meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020 via Zoom conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details will be found at www.cityofalpine.com for the purpose of considering the test agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a quorum, provide proof of notice of the meeting and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meetings, comment and questions, rules and procedures are listed in the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to Megan Adrien, If you have petition or any other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the City Secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be cued upon and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will be called upon those individuals one at a time, and our meeting moderator will take you off mute and to make your comments. The function of the function, this will function the same as our existing sign and sheet at council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with the ward you reside in or business interest. If you do not live or own the property of the city about, if the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. I'm sorry, my computer went off there. It's back on. Okay. Will be allowed, the mayor and or city council members may call the point of order to stop the personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack elected official or staff member in the meeting, they need to be barred. First of all, on a call this meeting to order, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Secretary, do we have?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 4:00 PM on June 22nd, 2020.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I have not received any public comments at this time.
Okay, we have no presentations or recognitions today. And report, City Mayor, I don't have one. A city attorney.
Mayor and Council, I have a report up in your slide presentation. If y'all want to follow through on it, it'll get y'all, get y'all up to date on where we are on the statewide and locally on the mask issue and those kind of things. If you go to the next page, the governor's.
Megan, what's going on with the video? I mean, the audio?
We can't hear him. We can't hear you, Rod.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Rod.
Okay, I will, I've been having some bandwidth trouble here on my thing. Let me try to check in from.
Why don't you stop? Hey, hey, Rod, why don't you just stop your video? And let's see if your audio will, will take over. Sometimes that video's bandwidth hog.
Yeah, if not, call on the phone. Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Little better.
Is this, is this better? If maybe I could, like, let me check in from my phone. Megan, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get off of this and get him on my phone. He may not be able to.
Hey, Megan, do you know what number he'll be calling from?
Last time he had both going, it came in from his.
Usually his cell.
Name, well, it's his name, but I don't have his cell. If you want to text it to me so I can recognize it.
I will.
Oh, it came in as his name.
Okay, good.
So you don't need the number?
No, I just need for him to get his audio up.
Okay.
His video and.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's better.
Okay. I'm gonna go through the slide presentation. Y'all should have that up there. Governor Abbott issued executive order. Can you hear me?
There is an echo, but yes.
We can hear you. You might have to kill your other feed, Rod.
That's what I'm trying to do here.
Yeah.
Okay, the governor issued executive order GA 18 on April 27th that forbade local entities from enacting more stringent restrictions than the governor, including mask requirements. He, in June 3rd, in his order number 26, he also said that we can't do something more strict than what the governor says, but he did want businesses to start opening. Next slide. Then, when asked about it a few days ago, Abbott said that he's not going to mandate that any individual wear masks, but he wants businesses to tell people to wear masks. So if people are out in public, he said, you don't need to wear a mask, but when they go into a store, businesses can require patrons to wear a mask. Okay, next slide. So based on that, you have some big cities starting to require businesses to require employees and patrons to wear masks when the social distancing is not possible. In other words, if people are going to be closer than six feet to each other, the businesses are required to make their patrons and their employees wear masks. In Bear County and in the city of San Antonio, they impose a $1,000 fine on businesses that violate it. But once again, because of the governor's order, there's no penalty against the individuals that don't wear masks. So where does that leave us? That, eight other Texas counties have also now issued mask orders, including Travis County, Hidalgo County, Dallas, and El Paso and Harris County. These are all large cities that have a.
We lost him.
We did. I show he's still connected. Rod, can you hear us? If so.
They ordered the business system, ordered their. They don't have any license to do that.
We can't hear you, Rod.
All right. Hey, Megan, why don't you pop down to the next slide? I've gone over these several times. So slide six, the challenging, challenges to enact a local mask order. You know, certainly the political implications in our current environment.
Okay, I'm sorry you can't hear me.
Yeah, I can, I can go through these. The, the National Federation Independent Business has also spoken out against local Texas orders. You know, quit, put simply, you know, the owner, it's putting the owners in a difficult position of policing their customers while trying to reopen and rebuild their businesses. While the governor may not challenge city mask order, local businesses could attempt litigation. And in talking to Rod earlier today, and I know that's something the council has asked Rod previously, you know, from, from a litigation perspective, how would, how would that impact us? Next slide, Megan, please. The, you know, some, some of the other challenges that we could potentially face here, we didn't know back in April, the Brewster County Sheriff's Office had indicated that they would really not enforce any sort of mask ordinance is what they posted. Next slide, please. You know, the other challenge is the individual really wouldn't be the one liable. It would be the business's task with enforcing those rules. What would happen, right? So some of the what ifs, if a person comes in and decides, you know, that they're not going to wear a mask, we've all seen some of the videos out on the internet where situations like that have occurred. You know, how is that gonna play out in, in City of Alpine as well? So these are all things that council in the community have to contemplate. Next slide, please, Megan. Challenges, you know, from an application perspective as well. You know, the, the orders that have been issued so far have included language stating masks are only required in businesses when and where six feet social distancing not possible. So then that becomes certainly a judgment call. We could see businesses asserting defense that social distancing is possible in their particular establishment. So kind of back to that point that was made earlier. You know, what, what, what would happen if the business owner pushed on this from, from a legal perspective? So these are simply the, the items that as a city we have to contemplate. Last slide, please, Megan. But here's, here is the point that is super important. Regardless of what our city or other cities determine, there's a growing body of evidence supporting masks as a key to halting the spread. I know we shared on our city blog that recent case study that came out of the, the community in Missouri where two hairstylists had been early stages of COVID. Then they tested positive. They went backwards for three days. You know, anybody's ever been to a Great Clips before knows that you have to register there with a phone number. So they were able to do impeccable contact tracing out of those 140 people that those two hairstylists had seen in those three days. Over the following two weeks, zero of them tested positive for COVID-19. There was strict enforcement of mask wearing as well as sanitation and social distancing. So you came there by appointment only, had to wear a mask. Everything was cleaned down between guests. You know, the city, one of the things that, that has come around, folks have talked to Rod, talked to myself, and I know I'm sure talking to the mayor and individual council members are, you know, the awareness of masks and effectiveness there. So how would we craft that sort of language moving forward? County like Hayes County went that route. They don't include a penalty provision. So it becomes more of a proclamation, but then working on steps to really push adherence to that proclamation within the community. And then one of the other tidbits that, you know, Rod's seen is most of these orders specify, you know, N95 masks being best reserved for medical professionals and first responders. Certainly, we know that people that maybe engage in woodworking or other trades have or hobbies have the N95 masks available. We certainly, from a city perspective, were able to procure for our workers out in the field, our team members, and will continue to push hard on ordering those, a good, you know, good mask, but there are also other good cloth substitutions out there. And I know we've put stuff on our city website relative to that, so. Rod, I, I hope I pinch hit for you appropriately. And I can. Megan, you might want to take him off mute now.
Give me one second. I have to find him in the list.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric, for covering that for me, and I apologize for the technical problems. But the, the council can see that the, they have the issue before them that to protect the community, it's best to try to have people wear masks, but we can't, we can't do everything we want to do. So it's, it's really up to the council who want to approach the issue.
Yeah, one of the things I, I would share with council too is in a lot of the conversations I've had with folks over the last several days, I've redirected them back to that tiered matrix, but also that objective statement that we had crafted and formulated and put out. And, you know, want to remind everybody, we're, you know, from a city perspective, very conscientious of the health and well-being of our residents as well as the implications on, on businesses too. So certainly very relevant at this, this point in time.
Yeah, I agree with everything the city manager's saying. My only problem is penalizing the, the businesses for folks that enter the store without wearing the mask and not penalizing the person that, that does not wear or adhere to the policy. That's where I have an issue on. And second is, have we contacted all the business community in Alpine to see if they would on their own cooperate in, in requiring the mask to be worn when they enter their establishments? You know, I had an issue the other day with, and I shared that with the city manager with Bagu. I went to a restaurant and no one was wearing a mask. So all it took was a simple phone call to Bagu, and two hours later, he responded, everyone's wearing a mask. So, you know, and I'm already getting phone calls with people that are upset about being forced to wear the mask. So have we tried the approach of, of first going to the business establishments and asking them on their own to require to wear the mask? I mean, we've got this, this virus that hit us pretty hard here in the over weekend, and now we just, I just had another one, bringing the total to 40.
Forty-four now.
How many?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, okay. I just, then it, it must have gotten updated then. But, I mean, I think it's crucial that we all wear the mask. I wear mine as, you know, everywhere I go and self-isolate myself as much as possible. But I think we need to really think this out. And the business committee, you see, they will cooperate on their own. And if not, then perhaps let's, let's take it a step further because really, you know, we, city attorney, do we have a, winning any litigation?
Keep in mind real quick that this is still in draft form. It's just for discussion.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's just a draft. We're just discussing it, but I'm just having my input on it.
We don't have any litigation on the mask issue right now. But you raised the biggest problem that I could see that would come out from somebody that might want to litigate, which is, why are you finding the business when I'm telling everybody that comes in here to, to wear a mask? But here's this idiot that wouldn't wear a mask if I told him to wear a mask. So, you know, why are you feeding the business when they're trying to comply? That would be the issue that could come up in litigation.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm saying. You know, the customer, I was at Morrison's just yesterday evening, and they had a sign up there that, you know, people should have a mask when entering the, the garden center. So whether people are complying or not, I don't know, because I was the only one there and, and all the employees were wearing a mask. So they are trying to do something about it. So why are we going to go and penalize them with folks that come in that actually refuse to wear it? And we can't have a mask patrol going to every business location every minute on the hour to, you know, to, to have the customers escorted out?
I've been seen on TV for fights are breaking out.
What's that again, Lucy? I didn't.
That I've been seen on TV for fights are breaking out when an establishment is telling the customer to wear a mask.
Right, correct. I've seen quite a few of those. So I think, you know, I, I, you know, I like the draft, what the draft is saying, but we really need to think it out. Let's, let's try and first, I'm asking the business community. And, and we need to really make the public aware, you know, 44 cases now in Alpine. Okay, we don't have, if all, if all of them required to be in the hospital, we don't have the bed space for them. I mean, this is a serious issue that people need to take it seriously. Once we started getting the cases of the virus, I started noticing more and more people not wearing the mask. And some of these are folks that I saw that weren't wearing them prior to all this. So I think we need to make a public statement, guys, this is real. This is your health, this is the health of your community if you don't do just the basic functions. I don't see what's so hard about wearing a mask. I really don't. It's like putting a shirt on. You know, you do it every day.
So, so, so right now, we're in the city attorney's report. Do we want to go down to an action item and have a discussion on this topic?
Okay, yeah, we can do it. Just that I was making my comments about the legalities of it, but yeah, we can move on down. Okay, do we have any city staff updates?
No, sir.
Okay, public hearings, none. Consent agenda, we have none. And information discussion items, we have none. And now we get to the action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to 10 per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro tem, citizens are required to state their names and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live or own business or property in the City of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. City manager.
Yeah, item number one is to discuss considering take appropriate action on ordinance 2020-06-01, an emergency ordinance of the City of Alpine instituting emergency measures due to a public health emergency. Establishing a penalty is provided herein, allowing for severability and providing an immediate effective date.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I propose that the city council approve ordinance 2020-06-01, an emergency ordinance of the City of Alpine instituting emergency measures due to the public health emergency as delineated with the exception of the following. And that would be to replace, under the following as hereby in effect, replace the paragraph "Health and Safety Policy Commercial Entities" in its entirety and replace it with the following text. And I will read that text, and I know the city secretary, I sent a copy of this to her earlier, but I think it's important because I believe it addresses the concerns that were highlighted by the city attorney and the points that you're making, Mayor. So from the date of this ordinance, all commercial entities in the City of Alpine, providing goods or services directly public, should follow recommended CDC guidelines aimed at reducing the spread of COVID-19. In addition, all commercial entities must display one of two signs at the entrance of their business. One will be printed on green paper and states, in order to minimize the spread of COVID-19, a condition of entrance into this building or on the premises requires wearing of a face mask that covers the nose and mouth. The other option is a sign printed on yellow paper that will state, masks to minimize the spread of COVID-19, while recommended, are not a requirement for entrance into this building or on the premises. Further, the City of Alpine will make both signs available to commercial entities in the City of Alpine. That eliminates penalties. It establishes that the business owner can determine whether masks are required or not. And then it continues on with the rest of the information. So that's the motion that I would make. If there's a second, then we can talk about it some more.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in a second.
Okay, so again, the basis, and, and from my own perspective, and the reason I spent time crafting that language to replace paragraph one is last time we had the discussion about penalties, which is hard because no matter if we get 99.9% of the businesses' compliance, there are going to be some that would rather not do that. And so this is not about a choice that we as council are going to make. What we're trying to do is protect our residents and notify those who are residents and or visitors to our city about where masks are required and where they are not. And let the individual make their own decision about whether they choose to enter that establish or not based upon whether it's a green sign or a yellow sign. Now, as you all know, my mother's 89, so we've been spending a little bit of time out here in California, taking care of her. The good news is she fell the other day, has a big gash in arm, so glad we're here. And she's recuperating and thank God, doing fine. We'll be headed back to Alpine this weekend. But as we walk through a number of small communities, which there are in Southern California, particularly along the beach communities, very, very similar to Alpine. They have a main street, they have restaurants, they have a bazillion shops. You know, they're after the tourist dollar, just like we are in Alpine. They put signs up and said, hey, gotta wear a mask, come on in. But it is not an enforceable item, but it certainly has caused everyone pause before they go into a facility because they got a sign on the door that says, hey, wear a mask. You can come in, don't wear a mask, you know, and it's a green sign, you're not coming in. Business owners are making those decisions. And so I think what we want to do is continue to support our businesses, support our business leaders, take away the penalty and use the peer pressure that can easily exist for people to wear a mask. And that's why I proposed that modification to the ordinance in paragraph one. And, you know, as the city, we can print out the green ones and the yellow ones and hand them out, they stick them on the door. It'll be very clear which ones we should go into wearing mask and which ones are not worried about it because I know there are many business leaders who want them. Also, many, many business leaders do not want to be in the situation of, of saying one way or the other. And this, and to your point, Mayor, if there's someone in Alpine who's not aware that we've got a bunch of COVID cases running around, I'm not sure they are, they've got their brain working properly because the numbers are just going up and just give some perspective. You know, the numbers we have right now at 44, it is high, that, and in terms of measures per million, that puts us over 5,000 per million, which is where more than most states are. And right now, Texas is coming close to the state of California in terms of case rates. So, you know, California's going to start asking Texans where they're coming from and self-quarantine. We're kind of flipping the thing around a little tongue-in-cheek, but that's my, that's my thought process and rationale. I will be quiet and hopefully rest of council will give their perspective.
Yeah. Okay, we'll start with Ramon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that it should be left up to the businesses to, to make their own decisions as to which, as to how to proceed. Because, and I, I feel that the, the different colored papers to inform the public about entering an establishment with a mask is important. And I think that's a good, right now, logical way to go. And I totally agree, no fines for businesses. And I hope we can find mid-ground to see which is the best approach. But the idea is to halt the spread of this virus, which is, we all know now. and I don't think we expected it, but it's quite high. And of course, any business person, as far as I'm concerned, would want to comply in some manner because if for some reason a, the COVID virus is found in a business, it's likely to be shut down or will have to be shut down. So I would imagine they would have to take some self, some action to be sure that that doesn't happen. But per se, I'd like the draft ordinance presented thus far. And, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members on this issue.
Yeah, I'm going to go one by one. And that was the purpose of this meeting. I wanted to hear everybody's input and how they feel about this. So we'll go, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one more thing I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor, is on the face coverings for the general public. The only thing I want to ask is where it says Alpine employees are also recommended to wear face coverings under certain circumstances of general public. I would like to add Alpine employees and city officials. Give that some consideration.
Right. And I think the city staffs are already wearing those. I walked in there several times and everyone's wearing their mask. I wear mine everywhere I go. So, you know, and, you know, people weren't believing it until we got the virus and now some cities members that were non-believers were wearing them, which is fantastic. So Lucy.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we do that, Ramon just proposed an amendment, I believe, to the motion that's on the floor. So I just want to keep track of it. Thanks, Ramon. And so I would be in favor of adding after the word Alpine employees in paragraph two and city officials to amend it. And I think Ramon just gave his second.
Okay, very good. You got your second there.
Thanks.
Lucy.
Um, I like how recommended the ordinance that is being proposed and what Ramon said. I am, I think that it's up to the businesses because like Rick said, and you, Mayor, you know, some businesses want to do it and others don't. I've gotten texts and messages and calls. Some wanted, some don't.
Well, here's the thing, Lucy, what I tell, and you know, I've talked to a couple of businesses this week. What I tell them, the sooner we get on the boat, the quicker we can open even more. Otherwise, we're going to keep regressing where the governors come and shut the state down again. So you got two choices. It's very simple.
Right. So what about, I've also was asked ago, I had some people that were asking me about the establishments with a lot of, that they had crowds, like the bars in particular.
Well, I think the only bars that are open is the Crystal, Harry's, and I think the Blues and the Green go just opened today after they spent a week and had disinfecting.
Mayor, you do have an individual representing the Old Crystal Bar who would like to speak during the public comment time.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to Maria.
Well, I think that what Rick proposes is a good compromise so that, you know, people who want to shop or go to a restaurant can see if they feel safe going into the establishment, whether they require masks or not. But I like the way that it was written in the first place. I think that we're going to see the same businesses that weren't requiring masks continue to do the same. And we're going to see another repeat of, you know, kitchen workers getting sick and, you know, potentially getting customers sick. And that's kind of what I'm afraid of. But, you know, that's why I like the way it was written, but I'm happy to compromise with the color-coded signs, I guess.
Okay. Yeah. For your thoughts, Betty.
Well, I happen to agree with her. But I think that it's up to the individual, but me, myself, I wear my mask. Whenever I go into a place, I wear it. Because I don't want to get sick. And if these people that are going and not wearing a mask get sick, they have nobody to blame but themselves.
So true, Betty, so true. Maria, you had a comment?
No, I already gave you my comment.
Okay. City attorney. Rod.
I think the proposed, did y'all hear me?
You're breaking up. You sound like you're in the well.
Okay, the, the, I think Rick's changes are excellent. I think they comport with what the governor's trying to do, but I think it's going to let people in Alpine know what business is going to, which businesses are safer, but it puts the onus back on the business owner, which is really what we need to be doing. So I think the changes are excellent.
Right. Okay. And, you know, I can prove with what Rick said, you know, peer pressure. Because that's the only way it's going to get done. And I think I had mentioned it some time back about that. The more people wear the mask, the more you see people, other people will start wearing them. It's not a deal of being embarrassed or anything like that. It's a health issue. You know, it's a life and death issue is what it is. You know, I don't know how painful it is when someone gets the virus and they pass on or they survive. But, you know, we as a city council, we need to keep our cities healthy. And these are simple little steps, you know, washing your hands, you know, social distancing, wearing your mask. It's not a difficult task that we're asking folks to do. Very simple. If we can do it, then other folks should do it also. So yes, I'm in total agreement with the, with the changes that Rick has proposed. Any other comments?
Do we have a comment, I think, from, that was commented from someone from Crystal Bar?
Yes, yes, I'm asking them to display their video and unmuting them.
Great. There they are. Is that Amy?
Yes.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Amy Hardy. I own the Old Crystal Bar along with my brother and Ryan Kincaid. We, as a business owner, feel like we should be able to let the individuals make their own choice. I personally, as a business owner, do not feel right making my customers put on something that they're not comfortable wearing.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Amy. You know, it's to eat your own, but also we're looking out for everybody else. If someone has the virus and you saw what happened at Spice Wood.
I correct. And how many cases are negative?
And very easy, that could, one person could infect a bunch of people. So.
And I, I agree with that, but that person is also making the choice to leave their house.
Right, right.
And if they want to come to my establishment, that is their choice and their choice alone. I'm not going to enforce something on them that they don't feel comfortable wearing. Number two, when you walk into the bar, you're going to have to take your mask off anyway to drink. So how would I enforce that person? I'm going to have to walk around and make sure that everybody takes one drink of their drink and then puts their mask back on?
Well, that's why, in my view, the merits of having just a sign up, just so people know, it's easy because that doesn't force you, Amy, to make any decision. It's a it's a green sign or a yellow sign. People are going to come in, they're going to make their choice. And that's why I tried to award it to give folks like you the opportunity to work it.
Correct. Can you tell me how many people have been tested?
City manager, I think you might have that answer.
As of last night, there had been fifteen hundred and two people tested.
That's out of the tri-county area?
Out of the tri-county area, correct. I don't know how many they tested today, though.
And.
Those are negative, negatives.
What's that? There's only one negative.
So out of fifteen hundred tests, there's only one negative?
No, there's.
In Brewster County.
Yeah, no, Cynthia, our positive count right now is and that's the total amount of tests, fifteen hundred and two is from when they started testing in Brewster County or the tri-county area, I'm sorry. There's been, let's see, forty-five plus twelve, so fifty-seven positive cases. And then there's probably about three hundred of those that haven't tended to result yet. Now, I don't know if any more positives came in today other than the five that displayed.
And how many people are you having at the hospital right now? How many current COVID patients are in the Alpine Hospital?
I don't have that number.
Dr. Ed, go on.
There are several that have been transported to higher care.
And have they recovered?
I hate to interrupt, but the three-minute time limit is up.
I do have a question though for her, if I can ask.
That's y'all's call.
Okay, Lucy.
I'm just curious about the social distancing in the bar.
What do you want to know?
Are y'all doing that or not?
Yep. Nope. If you walk in, you will see every bar stool is six feet apart, marked with yellow tape, as well as the chairs outside. The picnic benches also are marked off as well. If someone is touching someone else, that is not my place to tell them to quit. I have all the, I have all the CDC guidelines in place. I cannot forcibly make someone stay away from another person, nor can you.
Thank you.
That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have one person who's raising their hand through Zoom, but they have not submitted a request through the email. Would you like me to?
No. You know, the guidelines are on, they've been posted. And they need to follow them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none. So Rick has made an amendment to the motion, to the guidelines, to the drafted policy. And it's been seconded. Does everybody understand what Rick has, what changes Rick has made?
Yes.
Okay, are y'all ready to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the changes that Councilman Stevens has proposed, raise your right hand. All those against? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Happy to help, Mayor. That's a good discussion, the right discussion.
Yes, sir, it was. Okay. Anything else?
Did that include Ramon's amendment as well?
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
Sorry, Cynthia, I wanted to make sure you had clarification.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. If I'm reading this correct, on this drafted motion, it would be enforced until our meeting on the seventh. Correct. Would you like for me to read the entire thing?
It's on the website.
Okay, but I'm asking the council.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of the drafted motion?
I thought we voted.
We voted on your amendment.
Ah, gotcha. Okay, I'll keep.
So now I will need a motion on the drafted. I'm tongue tied here. On the ordinance. Thank you, Ramon. Yes, sir.
I'm just voting yes.
Okay, all those in favor of it, raise your right hand. Oppose, like saying, motion carries. Thank you very much. And let's see if, how it works, you know? And I think, you know, peer pressure, hopefully we'll make a big change because these numbers are coming up and they had a total of seven hundred and fifty-one tested in the last four days, not including today or tomorrow. But, and some of the results are just now filtering in. I had mine done Saturday morning. I was negative. Thank goodness. So I, if council hasn't had it done yet, please get tested. I want the council to make sure that they're tested. Okay?
I did. Mine was negative.
Okay, very good. Okay. But we all need to really get tested. Seriously, you know, we got to show by example.
Negative.
Okay, so I think that's about all we had on the meeting, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rick? Yes, sir, city manager.
Yeah, we're, I'm sending the notes out right now for the team to get the signs in production tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And Chief Martin will distribute, his team will distribute to the businesses in town.
And I think, I think what Rick has proposed is pretty fair and reasonable for the establishments and also for folks about, you still have your choice to wear, not to wear, whether you enter or not. That's simple. Okay, so Rick?
So I think the mayor is asking if I want to choose to adjourn the meeting or do we have comments? I move we adjourn.
Okay.
A second.
They made a second it, there's no debate and meetings adjourned. Thank you all very much. Great discussion. Y'all handled it well. I appreciate it.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Thank you.